I'm just trying to get to the technology, you know, I've got the CIA.
Opening the regular meeting of the Sonoma Planning Commission for Thursday, January 18th. And could we please have a roll call?
Yes, you can. Commissioner Donback?
Here.
Commissioner Nugent?
Here.
Commissioner O'Gorman Jenkins?
Here.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Here.
Commissioner Willers?
Here.
Vice Chair Barbos?
Here.
Chair Barnett?
Present. Okay, and is there any changes to the agenda that anyone would like to make? If not, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's moved in second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Donback?
Yes.
Commissioner Nugent?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Gorman Jenkins?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Willers?
Yes.
Vice Chair Barbos?
Yes.
Chair Barnett?
Aye. The motion was carried five to zero. Okay. Mr. Eicher, would you be so kind as to lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States and to the republic which with its hands, my nation, under our invisible liberty and justice of our law.
Thank you, David. I'm now going to turn over the conduct of the next item on the agenda to Vice Chair Barbos. This is the selection of officers, the chair and vice chair for the next year of the commission's activities.
Am I supposed to be doing this? It says so, okay. All right, I would, I'm opening up nominations for the chair. If the, my fellow commissioners would like to nominate anyone, please do so.
I would like to nominate Vice Chair Barbos.
And thank you very much, I'm going to decline that. So, anybody else want to nominate someone? Mr. Willers?
I'll nominate the current chair, Larry Barnett.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, I think the nominations are closed. All right, and let's call for a vote.
We'll need to do a public comment first.
Oh, here comes somebody.
David Eicher. And, so I, I think Chair Barnett has done a great job, and I support him for a chair, but I also would have supported you.
Thank you.
For a chair, that would have been great. And so, you know, for Vice Chair, I think you again, or possibly Commissioner Willers who could be a nice Vice Chair, so I'll, I'll leave it at that for now.
Okay, great. Any other members of the public wish to comment on this? Do we have anyone on Zoom?
There are currently no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. Now, what call? Could we have a vote? Roll call?
Commissioner Donback?
Yes, for both?
One, one more time with the microphone?
Yes, for...
There's only, there's only one position up for vote.
Just the chair so far.
Okay, yes.
Commissioner Nugent?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Gorman Jenkins?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Willers?
Yes.
Vice Chair Barbos?
Yes.
Chair Barnett?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay. And before we get into nominations, I just want to say I'm not, it's not that I didn't like the job, I got to do the, the hotel project hearing, which was one of my peak life experiences. But, I am going to decline any nomination for Vice Chair, because I really would like to have some other people get their feet in the sand here, and with a view toward the future. So, let's open up nominations for Vice Chair.
Commissioner Willers?
I'm gonna decline, only because of my participation in the, in the Planning Commission and a project that's gonna take place during the course of this year, so.
I nominate Commissioner O'Neill.
I will recuse myself because I'm out of area.
It's like a hot potato, isn't it? Making our way down the line.
Okay. I'm not allowed.
Oh, you are, I didn't know that.
Mr. Barnett?
I would like to nominate Ms. Donback.
Excellent, anybody else care to nominate?
We're running out, unless you...
Well, awesome.
Okay, then let's call for a vote. Oh.
Public comment.
Public comment? With word from Mr. Eicher. Anybody, anybody on Zoom?
No.
Okay, now we can vote.
Commissioner Nugent?
Aye.
Commissioner Donback?
Uh, aye.
Would you be able to do it one more time with your microphone on?
Oh, sorry. Aye.
Commissioner O'Gorman Jenkins?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Willers?
Yes.
Vice Chair Barbos?
Yes.
Chair Barnett?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations.
All right.
You should gavel back.
I'd like to live up to...
Thank you very much.
Low bar.
Okay, moving right along. The next item is comments from the public. These are comments for items that are not on the agenda. When you come up, please give your name and make your comments. Hello, David Eicher. I'm, I'm here to, to talk about performance standards, construction management plan, complexion, construction completion schedule. I've gone by various projects, development projects that just kind of like sitting there, they're not moving anywhere. And I've been before this board before to mention this, but it's, there's some new members now. And I think when we come to certain construction projects, consider that we need a construction management plan and construction completion schedule. And possibly also performance security, which is cash, a bank guarantee, a performance bond, or a letter of credit. And, if get this from, the city of Piedmont did this one time for a project that had been going on for years, and they were complaining that it was just taking forever to get done, and there was noise and so forth. And so, I think in the future, you should look at various projects that might be in such, maybe a place where there's an eyesore. Example would be, you know, someplace on the Plaza especially, that you don't want construction or a chain link sitting there for months or even years in some cases. So I just want you to take this in consideration for, in general for future projects. Thank you. Thank you, David.
It's a very good idea, by the way.
And, any other members of the public? Do we have anyone on Zoom?
There are currently no hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you, Natalie. Okay, then the next item is the consent calendar. This is, these items, this is multiple items that can be voted on in one motion. This, it consists of, at this point, the draft minutes from the meeting of 10:19 and Anyone want to remove these items for separate discussion? Mr. Willers?
I'd like to remove the minutes for October 19th, for a clarification.
Okay.
Would you be able to say it one more time with the microphone? I'd like to remove October 19th, meeting minutes, for a clarification.
Okay. Anyone else? Now, should we go ahead and do that first, and then have the motion on the approval, or should we approve the minutes that are not being brought up again?
Approve the minutes that aren't being brought up again first.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes of 11:16:23.
So moved.
Second. Okay, moved in seconded, roll call, vote, please.
Commissioner Barbos?
Yes.
Commissioner Nugent?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Gorman Jenkins?
I'll abstain, I was absent.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Willers?
Yes.
Vice Chair Donback?
Yes.
Chair Barnett?
Yes.
The motion passes five to one.
Thank you. Mr. Willers, we'll go back now to the minutes of 10:19.
The one, the one comment that I'd like to make is, under a public hearing where it has commissioners disclosed ex parte communications as follow, it was my understanding that it was current ex parte communication, it wasn't the conversation I had had 12 years ago. The city attorney essentially said, over the current application, and the communications that I had with Michael Ross, Bill Hooper, and at that time Steve Page, was at the very beginning of the project 12 years ago. So, if I can have my name removed from that, I'd like that.
Okay, how do we effectuate that modification? Ms. Gates?
Can we insert the word "current"? So, which ones, so you didn't talk to any of these people under the current application? So, we will bring these back, let me just clarify again, because I think you stated this, and so that's why it was highlighted, but I get what you're saying.
But I stated what, I talked with them 12 years prior.
Right, and so that's what the, the minute taker noted, so I just wanna, so we may just note what we were just saying is 12 years prior.
Okay, thank you. All right, now I'm looking for a motion on the approval of the draft minutes for 10:19 2030.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
One second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Barbos?
Yes.
Commissioner Nugent?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Gorman Jenkins?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Willers?
Yes.
Chair Barnett?
I was not party to that meeting, so apparently I can still vote even if I've not party to it.
You were there. Not for that item, but he was there at the meeting.
That's true, but not for that item.
It's fine, you can vote on this one.
Okay, aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Now we're into our public hearing portion of the meeting. The first item is consideration and discussion to, and possible action to adopt a, an extension of time for an approved tentative parcel map. This is for the large parcel 234 Malay Street, which had come up before us once before. And I assume we have a staff report?
We have a very, very brief one. On February 10th, 2022, the Planning Commission approved a tentative parcel map for a two lot split at 234 Malay, and at this time, the applicant is requesting a one-year extension. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve the maximum allowable under our code, which would be three years. As we all know, in the development world, sometimes things happen, and they don't have an opportunity to come back if we just do a one-year, so the recommendation is to approve a three-year. They do not anticipate needing that long, they're in the processes of finalizing the map, and we anticipate that to be done within the next six months or so. Are there questions for staff?
Okay, thank you, are any questions? I think we're all familiar with this parcel and the tree study that was done, and the proposal for its division. Okay, any comments from the public? Please come up, give your name, and make your comments.
My name is Gabrielle von Stephens, and I live at 265 West MacArthur, which butts up exactly behind the, the Malay Street property. And there has been, there's been an issue with a tree that was been dead since February, and I have written to Mr. and Mrs. Ryder several times, and had to have that tree removed. And I went to the city, and I went to the fire department, and I went to the police department, and nobody seemed to be responsible to have this tree removed. Well, they finally removed it in November, and anyway, it, it's, it's, it's an issue with, with this property, if they're gonna build two houses there, because I'm right behind them. And my bedroom butts up to, to this particular property, so I don't know if, if anything can be done with that. It's, it's, it's a problem.
Okay, is that your statement?
That's my statement.
Okay, at this point, if I understand things correctly, there's no specific development plan that's forward on this project. In other words, the site plan, the housing, siting, the nature of the other alterations to the property, and eventual landscape plan, or any of that, all of that's still ahead of the, us and the city for its consideration. Certainly, if there's a hazardous condition, such as you described, that was problematic, that, it's good that you brought that to the various, very, to the attention of various entities, I'm glad it was taken care of. Unfortunately, you know, we don't have anything in front of us that we can respond to in terms of sight lines, or anything else about the nature of the project that is, is finally going to be developed. At this point, all we, all we have is a, is a proposal to subdivide the property. There's been no building plan submitted, and there's no knowledge that, it's before us, that can, that, you know, gives us any indication of what issues might arise for you as a neighbor or anybody else, so. It's just premature to look at all those things at this point.
Okay, is there going to be a, a future in this?
Well, generally, and staff, correct me if I'm wrong, once the subdivision of this property is given its entitlement, the process of the construction of single-family homes on this parcel are not likely to come before this commission. In other words, an application will be filed with the city for the development of the property, and you can certainly communicate with city staff to be informed of the submission of any specific proposal, so you have an opportunity to see what's proposed. But by and large, as long as a project, particularly a single-family home project, is done within the confines of the development code, which means the height, the, the size, the, what's called the floor area ratio of the, of the building to the site overall, the siting of the building, the number of stories, all of these things are basically outlined in terms of what can be done, or what is allowed to be done within the development code. If development plan is submitted, which is in conformance with those items, that's not going to be come before us either, nor typically is there much of an opportunity to, for it officially come before any city body, although you as a neighbor can always go before the city council, for example, and, and raise an issue as a neighbor in, about the ways in which you feel would be affected, that would, you would like to see some changes of one sort or another made. And those are basically decisions that, that would be made ultimately by the city council if the planned project is in conformance with the development code provisions. Have I explained that fully?
Yeah, I think so, I would just encourage, my name's Christina Tierney, I'm in the planning department, I would encourage you to reach out to me, I can try to address your concerns. In a general sense, this is the most conservative zoning district that we have, it's rural residential, so it has, I believe, the biggest setbacks. So for any property in the city, the development's gonna be as far away from your property as possible in the city.
So, who, who, I would go to, come to you?
Yes.
And you are where?
Yeah, my name's Christina Tierney, I'm at City Hall, and you can find my number and email address on the website.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Christina, what would be the standard hours that construction would be limited to, which I, that might be a concern?
Monday through Friday, eight to five, and then Saturday is nine to five, and then Sunday is nine to five.
Sunday?
Yes, and that's all on the noise ordinance.
So how come no one was for this dead tree? That was, was there for, oh, nine months?
I, I think probably the best thing to do at this time is to reach out to me tomorrow, and we can go over your concerns.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there are any other comments or concerns regarding this agenda item? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt a resolution approving the extension for the tentative parcel map, establishing a new expiration date of February 10th, 2027.
Second? Is there a second?
A second, second.
Okay, you, you got it, Amy. Okay, roll call, vote, please.
Before we vote, I just also want to make a note that there were no hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you very much, and I, I appreciate your diligence.
Thank you.
Because I'm an old man, and I lose track of these things.
No worries.
All right.
Ready to vote?
We're ready.
Okay, Commissioner Barbos?
Yes.
Commissioner Nugent, sorry.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Gorman Jenkins?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Willers?
Yes.
Vice Chair Donback?
Yes.
And Chair Barnett?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, we'll now go on to the second item under the public hearings. This is consideration and possible action to review a resolution approving a variance. This is for Claudia Merkel and existing modifications to 1625 square foot two-story single-family residence on Austin. Am I correct in recalling this has come before us once before?
No, a couple doors down.
Ah-ha, okay, I've got Austin Avenue stuck in my head.
I know.
Okay, so we'll entertain a staff report, please.
I'm just gonna skip this over. Sorry, we're a little cozy tonight with two of us up here. So the project before the commission this evening is a variance in design review. The, the project is located on the west side of Austin Street between Chase and East MacArthur. It's in the central east planning area, and the required setbacks are a 20-foot front, minimum five-foot side with a 15-foot combined, and a rear 20 feet. And the existing lot is a 0.15 acre lot with 50 feet of frontage. There's an existing 1625 square foot two-story residence with a detached, it's not a garage, it is a detached workshop, and a carport, and also a detached shed in the back. The structure was constructed in 1971, it's within the historic overlay, and surrounded by low-density residential. So the project site was subject to code enforcement action for construction without a building permit, and a stop work order was issued on August 17th, 2023. The activities included exterior modifications, including relocating a front door, moving and adding windows, and removal of the roof overhang on the porch. Here is a photo of what it was like before the work began, this is, I'll just call your note to the carport in the back, because we'll be talking about this later, note that it's right next to the property line. And this is the, the current state, so some painting has begun, the front awning has been taken off, and if you'll notice, there are two new transom windows in the middle, and a new front door on the left. So the project is before the Planning Commission for a variance to covered parking, and design review for the exterior modifications. The exterior modifications include the new and relocated windows and doors, as previously discussed, which are at the front and side facades, replacing the existing roofing and framing at the entrance, and the trellis, and replacing it with a new trellis, new exterior lighting, and the removal of the carport, and that's over the workshop. As mentioned before, the variance is for a request to have no covered parking on site. So here is the existing site plan, it's a little bit hard to see, but the covered, it's called patio roof on here, historically, I believe it used to be a carport, looks like part of one of the parking spaces is under it, but it is just adjacent to that southern property line. So removing this will probably be a very nice thing for the neighbor, they won't have the structure right next to them, the workshop would remain, but the, the cover and attachment would leave. Here's the proposed, you can see the two proposed tandem parking spaces.
Where, where are those two tandem parking spaces?
Adjacent to the house on the south side.
Oh, I see, so through where the carport's been removed?
Yeah, so here's where they are now.
Okay.
And that's where they're being proposed.
Thank you.
We have the exterior elevations, you can, this is the existing, you can see the carport on the, the lower image of the existing south. And we have the proposed. And the exterior colors, we have Swiss coffee or white dove for paint, with the exterior lighting, and the door as well. As I mentioned before, yeah, the, the project on, on Austin was also a variance for covered parking a couple doors down. And the unique circumstances for this property are that the existing carport is adjacent to the southern property line. The residence itself is 11 feet 9 inches from the southern property line, and our car, our required standard spaces are 10 by 20, and so there's just enough room to fit a car. However, there are additional setbacks for structures, if it's attached, it would need to be a five-foot minimum setback, and so there just isn't room between the property line to have five feet and then have a parking space behind, you can't really go back, because that's where the workshop is located, and our setbacks for the front are 20 feet, so we can't put a garage or carport any farther forward. And we have our variance findings, which I just kinda went through, the special circumstances, and the findings for design review. Staff's recommendation is to adopt the resolution approving the variance in design review, subject to findings and conditions of approval, including action to find the project categorically exempt from CEQA. That concludes my presentation.
Okay. Thank you.
And this is the current state. So some painting has begun. The front awning has been taken off. And if you'll notice, there are two new transom windows in the middle and a new front door on the left. So the project is before the Planning Commission for a variance to covered parking and design review for the exterior modifications. The exterior modifications include the new and relocated windows and doors, as previously discussed, which are at the front and side facades, replacing the existing roofing and framing at the entrance and the trellis, and replacing it with a new trellis, new exterior lighting, and the removal of the carport. And that's over the workshop. As mentioned before, the variance is for a request to have no covered parking on site. So here is the existing site plan. It's a little bit hard to see, but the covered, it's called patio roof on here. Historically, I believe it used to be a carport. Looks like part of one of the parking spaces is under it, but it is just adjacent to that southern property line. So removing this will probably be a very nice thing for the neighbor. They won't have the structure right next to them. The workshop would remain, but the cover and attachment would leave. Here's the proposed. You can see the two proposed tandem parking spaces.
Where are those two tandem parking spaces?
Adjacent to the house on the south side.
Oh, I see. So through where the carport's been removed?
Yeah, so here's where they are now.
Okay.
And that's where they're being proposed.
Thank you.
We have the exterior elevations. You can, this is the existing. You can see the carport on the lower image of the existing south. And we have the proposed. And the exterior colors, we have Swiss coffee or white dove for paint with the exterior lighting and the door as well. As I mentioned before, yeah, the project on Austin was also a variance for covered parking a couple doors down. And the unique circumstances for this property are that the existing carport is adjacent to the southern property line. The residence itself is 11 feet 9 inches from the southern property line. And our required standard spaces are 10 by 20. And so there's just enough room to fit a car. However, there are additional setbacks for structures. If it's attached, it would need to be a five-foot minimum setback. And so there just isn't room between the property line to have five feet and then have a parking space behind. You can't really go back because that's where the workshop is located. And our setbacks for the front are 20 feet. So we can't put a garage or carport any farther forward. And we have our variance findings, which I just kind of went through the special circumstances, and the findings for design review. Staff's recommendation is to adopt the resolution approving the variance in design review, subject to findings and conditions of approval, including action to find the project categorically exempt from CEQA. That concludes my presentation.
Okay. Thank you.
The applicant is present to answer any questions.
Okay. Would you like to come up and make any comments? No? Okay. I do have one question. Is the, does this property back up on the creek? No? Okay.
I don't believe so. Because I think there's another yard behind it, but I'm not positive.
Okay.
There's no creek setbacks on the property.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? The commission? All right. Any comments from the commission? No? Do we have anyone waiting with her hand up, their virtual hand up?
There is no one currently on Zoom with their hand raised.
Thank you, Natalie.
No problem.
Okay. Okay, Ms. O'Neill?
I'm just curious how it would come about that this kind of major construction would happen without any permits? Like, what happened?
That's probably a question for the applicant.
Yeah, could you please help us understand what happened there? Because that's, you know. Yeah, please, please come up to the microphone.
Sure, it was really my error. We started putting in windows because we had a very dilapidated house. And we wanted to shore it up. And then, at the same time, I was putting in a permit, a draft permit, but never got it done. And so, you know, timing was bad, but it was also my error, as far as that time.
And was there a contractor involved?
Oh, sure. Yeah, I have a contractor, licensed contractor. Yeah, I don't do the work on my own.
Yeah. What are the penalties for somebody doing work without a permit?
I'm going to be the wrong person to ask. I don't know. Do you have an answer?
There's a fine typically associated with it. There's a minimum and there's a maximum. Fees just changed, but off the top of my head, I think if it's, if a building permit is submitted within 30 days of the violation, I believe it's $412, I think, for the minimum. And then it's doubled that for the after 30 days.
So will there be a penalty imposed in this situation?
Yes.
Okay. I think we need to raise our penalties, by the way, but that's an offside. Thank you.
Okay, also beyond our purview. All right, any other questions or comments? I'll just say that I have noticed this house in my wanderings around town. And I knew it was only a matter of time before someone finally got their hands on this very strange house, which isn't all that old, but was an odd design from the get-go. And so I wish you luck with it. I hope it turns out well. Okay, if no more comments or questions, looking for a motion and a vote.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for a variance and approve the design review for this project.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, take a vote.
Commissioner Barbos?
Yes.
Commissioner Nugent?
Aye.
Commissioner Gorman Jenkins?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Willers?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dombach?
Yes.
And Chair Burnett?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming. Good luck on your project.
Thank you so much.
All right, we just have one more item before we get to the discussion of the, or commission comments and so forth, which has to do with a change in the adoption of revised environmental review procedures pertaining to CEQA. And so we'll turn this over to staff for your report.
Thank you. Very exciting things here, updating CEQA policies. Our environmental review procedures, the intent is to assist applicants in processing their applications and understanding the general steps in the CEQA process. The general member of the public has no idea what CEQA is. And they have this vision for their project, and they come to us and hear that forward letter word. And so our goal here is to update this and have a document that is more helpful for the Planning Commission, City Council's staff, and the community to be clear so that everyone understands the processes and expectations. It was last updated in 1991. As you can imagine, there have been significant changes to environmental laws since that time. And of note, cities' processes have changed a lot. Back in 1991, an initial study was, you know, a five-page checklist where you checked a box and it was a yes or a no, and staff typically did it and you moved on. Today, an initial study or negative declaration is a very technical document that's, you know, can be 200, 300 pages and have many appendices and technical documents. As that evolution has happened, we don't produce those in-house anymore. We rely on consultants. And the costs are passed on to the applicants along with a 15% fee from the city to manage those contracts. And none of that has been written down in black and white for everyone to understand. So those are really kind of some of the key changes. The goals are to align this environmental review procedures document with both state law and our current practices and standards. It defines the community development director's role in making CEQA determinations, clarifies that applicants are responsible for costs associated with technical studies and environmental review, as well as that management fee. And it is in eliminating, officially eliminating the Environmental Review Committee, which has not existed or functioned in quite some time. But on the books, they're technically the body that makes recommendations and decisions about CEQA. And clarifies communication protocol. And I mentioned the city's administrative fees. So all communications for environmental review need to be through the city. The whole intent is to have an independent third-party evaluation of a project. And so we don't want developers talking directly to the consultant with an attempt to sway or change minds in any way. So that's the presentation for this evening. The recommendation is for Planning Commission to adopt a resolution recommending to City Council the adoption of the revised environmental review procedures. And I'll open it up for questions and suggestions for modifications. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Christina? Yes?
I'm looking at the resolution and what is that resolution number? It's resolution number dash 2024? So we give resolution numbers once they're approved.
Any other questions? I've got a question. I guess it could be considered a comment. It would have been helpful to me, and maybe this current revision is so entire that the whole thing would have been underlined in terms of understanding what it is that's new, as opposed to pre-existing that we're continuing to adopt. Is there any way of figuring out or finding out what is new in here?
Yeah, I can do that. In general, it is pretty much word for word what we had with some additions from the CEQA guidelines, where we wanted to supplement with information that's in the statute or guidelines. But that's just really important things that we want the public to be aware of. So the exceptions to the exemptions is an issue that we run into often, where there will be a presumption that a project is going to be exempt from CEQA, but it's a historic resource or there's some other really unique aspect of the property. So in those instances, we copied the verbiage from the CEQA guidelines. We didn't have to. We could have just said, follow CEQA guidelines. But we tried to just be as user-friendly as possible. I think the other changes are really minor. We deleted the whole section of the Environmental Review Committee. And where it said Environmental Review Committee, we changed it to the Community Development Director, things like that. But substantively, not a lot changed. But I would be happy to go through and kind of highlight for you.
Okay, and I think I would suggest, because we're going to make a recommendation to the City Council, is that the document they get highlight those changes, just because it's a good way of knowing what's been changed.
Yeah, part of it is we only had a PDF. We don't have a Word document from 1991. So typically, you'll, you know, be able to just edit and highlight those changes.
Well, if you get yourself a good OCR program, you can scan that PDF and convert it to Digital Dex.
Not if it's a scan of a printed copy.
Okay, I'm not sure of what your problem is, but nonetheless.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Barbos.
In terms of changes in this, are there any areas in which, prior to the new rules, items related to CEQA had to come before, not necessarily the Environmental Review Commission, but any other commission that aren't now going to be required, so it'll be a staff determination? No?
No, but the big change is that, for some reason, it is worded that the Environmental Review Commission makes the determination on what CEQA document is appropriate. And historically, staff is the one who looks at the technical studies and works with our consultant and our attorney and say, yeah, we're going to do, this qualifies for an exemption or we need to do an EIR. For example, there wasn't a special hearing to determine that the Sonoma Hotel project needed an EIR. Staff made that determination and it was presented along with the project.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Ms. Dombach?
I just have a comment. I mean, since I didn't see the prior version, I actually thought this was a great primer and probably would be good for the City Council to read as well if they're not familiar. It reads really well and it kind of goes through the process at a high level.
Thank you.
I did review the prior document. I requested it, and I 100% concur with what you're saying, Vice Chair Dombach. The layout here is better. It is much more user-friendly for, was almost a deterrent from reviewing because when it's dated 1991 and it was clearly very old, it was signed by Mayor Valerie Brown. So I too would commend staff for the work. And I actually learned some things, having reviewed this, following my conversation with Christina. So I do appreciate the document and fully support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I've got one concern. And I want to ask how, I want to ask for staff's reassurance. And I don't know how you're going to do that. In the past, particularly in the area of exemptions, decisions were made that got the city in trouble and cost the city money and cost a lot of time and aggravation for people. And examples would be that a property was deemed subject to the provision of an exemption due to the definition of an urbanized area. Well, the CEQA definition for an urbanized area, it turned out, was the community of 100,000, which did not apply to the city of Sonoma. But nonetheless, that designation was chosen as an exception. As well, in that same process, the reality that the Broadway Corridor was recognized as a historical zone, or whatever you'd want to call it, was ignored, which would have invalidated that exemption entirely. Now, Ms. Gates is new, not to the subject of development and planning, but to the city of Sonoma. And ultimately, you're the one who's going to have the authority to sign off on issues like exemptions. We hope, I certainly hope, having gotten to know you, that you have a long and illustrious career with the city of Sonoma. But we are giving our development director, at this point, you, who I have great confidence in, a role that doesn't really, as I see it, provide very many opportunities for the public to know what's going on in this process. Ultimately, if I understand things correctly, if, for example, a project that is subject to CEQA review and that has gotten a scope of work developed would come before the Planning Commission for review and approval before it's finalized and goes on its way, I hope I have that correctly. That's at the sort of tail end of the process. And I think the exposure to the public at large, given my experience in this community, which is now 34 years of seeing how things get worked with, is that we have a lot of people in this community who actually are very interested in things like how an exemption gets defined or designated and whether or not it's appropriate. And they want to know about it. And so what I'd like to hear from staff is how we can also integrate into this process a public information portion so that people don't get brought in at the tail end, but have an opportunity to know what's going on. I'll give one other example, which didn't have to do with CEQA, but was an interesting example, which was, there was a property, a hillside property, and which was asserting the validity of a subdivision map from 1853, which is not all that unusual in California. And what it required was the city's issuance of a certificate of compliance, which allowed for the essentially re-validation of that ancient subdivision map so that a project or development could occur based on that subdivision. At the time that that happened, and this happened not too many years ago, there was nothing in place in terms of public notification. All decisions of staff, as I understand it, administrative decisions of a certain level, can be appealed by the public. But this requires public knowledge. If the public doesn't know a decision has been made, then it can't be appealed. It doesn't happen very often. I can't even think of any instances of public appeals which change the nature of something based on an administrative staff decision. However, I do believe that, much as was done with the certificates of compliance process, which now requires a public notice, I think we need to integrate some kind of public notice into the decision-making process here so it doesn't wait till the tail end of the whole process for the public to find out what's happening. And I don't have the solution for that tonight. I'm kind of soliciting staff's opinion as to how you think we can integrate this, what is essentially an information modality so that the public remains informed. Because we have a very active and involved public in Sonoma, and I think they appreciate knowing what's going on.
So I'm going to start with the CEQA. So on the CEQA part, the exemptions themselves, yes. We would bring that forward to you with the project. So it is noticed with the public hearing notice that goes out into the paper and that is mailed to all neighbors. It says specifically what the CEQA will be. It is the bigger projects, and it'll also be posted on the site. So they will know ahead of time what exemption is being proposed. And that is for you to adopt with your approval of a project. Staff is not going to be, though it is possible, directors can, staff can actually approve the CEQA exemption and just tell you what we did. But we're not doing that. We're actually going to present it to you and you'll adopt it with it. That is one way. So there is a notice around that. When it comes to negdex, mitigated negdex and EIRs, there's multiple public participation opportunities before it actually is brought to hearing. So there is information being provided to the public for their input during their public comment period. So there are opportunities there as well. At a hearing, if Planning Commission at that hearing of that item has questions and requests additional information, it is possible, upon direction by the Planning Commission, to go back and ask for additional information or studies if the information that you're looking for is not already provided. So that is possible. It's not an end-all until it's adopted. As far as administrative or ministerial approvals of projects, a couple of a couple of different things. We don't have a lot of projects that allow for that here. When we added things to our list, our work plan coming up, one of them was to look at opportunities to create an administrative process. With that administrative process, in another community that I did this, we did have a notification period. And so what it says is, we are going to approve this project in the next five days. And if, you know, or 10 days, or whatever that is that the Planning Commission, you know, decides, if we do move forward with this. And so that is noticed to everybody. Then it's posted and noticed with any 500 feet, according to our noticing standards. And if nobody says anything, then it's approved. And if somebody does, and they raise issue, we can bring it forward to the next higher body as applicable.
If I could just chime in a little bit. So CEQA is the guiding statute and guidelines. There's really prescriptive requirements for public noticing, circulation, comments. None of that is changing. That is all state law. So we're still gonna have our scoping meetings, things like that. What is being, and it's not even, it's a, this is our existing practice today. It's just putting it in writing what we do, which is that staff, in conjunction with attorneys, make the initial determination about what's the appropriate document, and then that is brought forward to the decision-makers.
Okay, I appreciate all that, and thank you. Let me make a suggestion that attached to this document, which we will, if we approve it tonight, will go on to the City Council. I think it would be very helpful for the council to know much of what you've just, you and Jen have just said. I would attach it as notes to this document that outlines notice to the public, the way in which the process works that provides for public notice, and when and how the public notice takes place, and what points in the sequence of events, and so forth, the timing of it. I think, you know, we've got a City Council that's pretty green and generally haven't had to deal with a lot of land use issues or CEQA projects. And there's not that many that are going to even be coming up, I think. So the opportunity to gain an understanding of what the process is is relatively rare. And I think the degree to which US staff can help to educate the council as to what public role is or the public participation and noticing on these things will ease their mind as well, even if they haven't thought of it. Because what ends up happening, and this is based in part in my experience of being on the council, and I'm sure Steve will reiterate it. I can't tell you how many times something came before the council, and the people in the audience went, come up, and they'd noticed, they'd been noticed, they'd been sent notice, everybody. They, oh, this is the first I've ever heard of this. And it happens all the time. Now, as long as the council understands that the process has taken place, that there has been an opportunity for the public to be informed, and ways in which it's been informed, if that becomes part of the packet, so to speak, in a discussion of an item, it will make their job easier, as it will ours as well, of course. So those are just some thoughts and suggestions. Mr. Willers?
Well, I think along the same lines. What's, you know, if you take our agenda as an example, if you look at the bottom of each of the items, you'll see a categorical exemption, class 32 of, from CEQA, for the items that we have on our agenda. So when we approve those, we approve that exemption. No one took a motion, no one discussed the CEQA item, no one gave the public a clear opportunity to talk about the CEQA item prior to taking an action on the project. And so, you know, from my perspective, I think that the categorical exemption should be at the top of the item, and that it should be the primary item that gets discussed prior to taking an action. In other words, you say, you know, we're gonna, this project has a categorical exemption. Are there any people in the audience that would like to discuss the CEQA item? No? Move on. And then we discuss the project. Because CEQA does anticipate that the environmental actions is complete prior to the approval of a project. And it often gets rolled together like this, which I've always argued that they should be separated, because taking an action on CEQA, if it's a negative action, the project is moved, essentially, at that point. If it's a positive action, then the project can be heard. And they're seen as two separate, you know. Everyone talks about CEQA being a, not a gateway to a project approval, simply an environmental action. So you don't approve a project just because you approved the CEQA document. You approve the project once you discuss it and find, make the findings and apply the conditions of approval. So I think that from just the actions of the Planning Commission, when we have exempted items, we just, as protocol, we just let that be the first thing that is opportunity to discuss. So, or, as before public comment, remind the public, if there is someone here to talk about the CEQA item, that this is a categorically exempt item under CEQA.
Thank you, Mr. Willers. Before I get staff's comments on that, do we have anyone? I don't think I've opened public comments on this yet.
You haven't, but there are currently no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, and anyone in attendance want to make a public comment? Then I will simultaneously open and close the public comment. Now, did you have any reactions or comments you'd like to make?
Yes, just a comment. And we are more than happy to touch on and discuss the CEQA component of it. However, you need to understand the project before you can understand the CEQA exemption. So that's the same process in which we apply. We don't actually look at the CEQA until the project is complete. We know what the complete project is gonna be, what's going on, and then we start our CEQA process. And so that is why. It's connected to the project itself, which is why it's not separated from the project. I understand what you're saying in the sense of, you don't approve it, though, if you can't approve the environmental. So, but, but the project is what's leading the environmental, but you can't. So they're connected, and they love each other. But sometimes they get divorced. But I will say, though, that we're more than happy to go through, I think, a, maybe a study session or something just specifically on CEQA for everybody, I think would be a good primer. And we could also record it and share it with all of our other commissions and council.
I would just add, yeah, there's nothing in this document before everyone for consideration tonight that is, when it would prohibit that in the future.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? All right, then, at this point, do we want to adopt this resolution? And if so, I need a motion.
Well, I believe we're recommending to the City Council, or are we?
That's correct.
Adopting it, yeah. So I'll make a motion that we recommend the changes made to, what are we calling this? Okay, environmental review procedures, the phrase there in front of me, to the City Council.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
All right.
Real call, please.
Commissioner Barbos?
Yes.
Commissioner Nugent?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Gorman Jenkins?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Willers?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dombak?
Yes.
Chair Barnett?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
All right, well, we're making fast work of tonight's agenda. We're up to items for discussion, including director comments and commissioner reports and comments. I don't see anything under items for discussion, so we'll go to the director comments and announcements.
All right, thank you so much. Jennifer Gates, Community Development Director. Finding my notes, there we go. So I did want to provide an update on the City Council meeting last night, if you didn't watch it or haven't heard. So the appeal of the Sonoma Hotel was approved in part. The modifications included a reduction from $100 per square foot to $50 per square foot, and no interest. And then an additional option was added for the actual new construction of residential development that would be rental. In addition, the climate action strategies that we were presented to you was approved as well last night. And then lastly, was the commission ordinance and policy that was modifying how commissioners are appointed, as well as time terms and all that fun stuff. Still trying to understand it all. So there'll be one more hearing in regards to the ordinance itself. The change that was made last night was that alternate for Planning Commission only will stay. All the other commissioners will not have alternates anymore, but Planning Commission will. There are some other changes. Once I understand them and get a better handle on how we're gonna implement them, I will present to you all of how that's gonna go on moving forward. And if you have any other questions regarding that, just let me know, and I'll get answers as I'm learning myself. The dates that are coming up, so I sent the agenda of the staff reports today for the January 23 joint meeting that will have Planning Commission, Climate Action Commission, and PROS together to talk about trees, our favorite topic. On January 29th, there'll be another general plan community meeting. It'll be at the Community Center. They want to host a meeting, so we're gonna do one more. This one, I'll be leading. We will not have our consultants at it. But we'll provide them the information we collect. And then on February 6th, the General Plan Task Force will have their third meeting. So they have been meeting and learning more about the general plan in the process. Our next meeting will be focused on what are the requirements of a general plan and the regulations around it. And with that, that concludes the director's presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we'll move on to any commissioner reports and comments. Ms. O'Neill?
I want to point out that next Wednesday, January 24th, in this room at 6:30 PM, will be the meeting of the SVCAC, which is now called the Sonoma Community Advisory Council. And they will have the general manager of the Smart Train, Eddie Cummins, there to present his plan for bringing in 160 tankers to the storage yard in Shellville full of LPG gas for generating revenue. And so I encourage people to participate in this meeting and hear the situation.
And what day is that?
It's Wednesday, January 24th, in this room at 6:30 PM. And Smart used to have some tankers. I think they had like 50 tankers there. And now they propose to bring in 160 tankers, and they would generate revenue of maybe $500,000 a year, which, if I'm allowed to have an opinion, is piddly squat compared to the hazard and liability with it.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Barbos?
Mine's more in the nature of a question than a comment. I was reading the newspaper today, online, and there was a link to a new statute relating to saleability of ADUs separate from the main residence. And I read that, and I had, holy smokes, this is a sea change. And it sounded like the jurisdictions had to accept that in order to have that option available to their residents. But the article, because it's a newspaper article, I wasn't really clear about that. Does staff have some information on that?
There are a lot of housing updates that have occurred, and we'll bring forward to you all of the ones that we will need to process and accept, and determine how we want to move forward with them. But yes, they did approve that. And a lot of us are trying, are scratching our heads a little bit about how that would happen.
More policy from Sacramento.
So just to follow up on it, how does it work? Is it a subdivision, or is it common property?
It'd be probably a condominium map that we would need to be processed, so.
Okay, anyone else? Ms. Dombak?
I just wanted to follow up on the comments earlier made by Mr. Ikar around enforcement. It's really a question. I believe that's on our list of things to do in 2024. Okay, just wanted to confirm that. Thanks.
Okay, I've got a couple of comments. First, I want to say with regard to the City Council's decision about the hotel, as you know, I did not participate in the deliberations. I think that, I didn't have a chance to say it to the commission as a whole, I think your deliberation and decisions pertaining to that project were absolutely correct. I am, I, in making your recommendations or making your findings and essentially imposing the conditions of approval, you did. You were not only, in my opinion, fulfilling the mandates of the city's new housing element, but fulfilling what you understood as what was named as the top priority of the City Council going forward. So I think that your decision was proper, and I commend you for it. And I'm sorry that your decision has been modified. I would have liked to have seen the city hang tougher and negotiate the way capitalists do, but it isn't the way government tends to operate. But I think you did a fine job in setting the conditions that you did. And I just want to commend you for that. I think that's all I was going to say. Once again, thank you for having confidence in my chairing the commission for the next year, and I look forward to working with you all. I might mention to our alternate, Ms. Nugent, that I did send a letter to the City Council in advance of the meeting reiterating my support for a continuation of the alternate position on the Planning Commission, and my concerns about eliminating it. And so I don't know to what degree my effort was included in their deliberation, but I do want you to know that I feel your participation in the commission is valuable and important, and that having an alternate at this commission is a good thing for us to be doing. And I wanted you to know that I was supporting that.
I appreciate that, Chair Barnett. I did watch with much interest the meeting last night. And Councilmember Wellender actually was quite articulate in the importance of having an alternate. And I can tell you that, you know, when I look back at my calendar, we had 12 meetings last year, and I was on the dais for 11 of them. So there is, it's important to have an alternate.
I agree. So thank you very much. Okay. All right, Ms. O'Neill?
So one question I didn't understand in the appeal with City Council, a lot of the topic was around the jobs, the union jobs that were coming in. But having union jobs, is that one of the conditions of approval?
I'm gonna jump in. The only thing that the hotel has agreed to is to not contest a union card check. Now, there's a vast difference between an uncontested union card check agreement and unionization. What a card check agreement is, is it's, sorry, the position to not contest a card check, a card check, is that it means that the employees get to vote on whether they want to have a union.
Right, but the hotel can be sold.
Of course it is, and I've been told that this condition is binding on the successors.
So my question is, and it's probably too late, but is that something that can be incorporated into a condition of approval? Is that, that was a big weighing factor for a lot of those council members. Is that, that was a big weighing factor for a lot of those council members, but the hotel can be sold and all of those union high-paying jobs could go away. Do we have any ability to incorporate that?
No, the project is, is done. So we probably, in case it comes back or anything, just not talk about those parts. But in the future, just for reference, I have not seen the requirement for a union except for in a specific agreement between the city and another entity where I saw union specific requirements or, and things. Typically, they're private agreements between private parties. So it's between the union itself and the individual doing the development. It's not inclusive of decision-making of whether something's a union or not. So I would caution against having things like that. Should be, what's the code say? What are the code requirements? And what are we looking at specific? And jobs, again, city council's a different beast, but for us specifically. So, but we can...
Mr. Barbos?
Just to your point, Sheila, I, Marty Bennett, who's been here before us, was the person who negotiated the agreement with Kenwood Investments. And I broached this topic of the sale of the project with him many times because I said, you know, I, and I still believe this project will never get built by Kenwood Investments, but it will be sold to somebody who builds hotels. And I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't going to be, just fall by the wayside. And he said that the lawyers for the union had really worked on that and assured me that it was as enforceable as it could be. But I don't know, I never looked at it and don't have, that's not my previous area of expertise, anyway. But anyhow, that's what I've been told.
Similarly, he told me that this agreement is enforceable to successors and assigns on this project. Now, that doesn't mean someone can't make a beef. Mr. Willers?
And use permits run with the land. They don't run with the applicant, and agreements can be broken. And so that element of a decision-making process should be left where it is, in the room with the lawyers, and not at the dais in terms of a swaying of whether or not a project is good or bad. And that is a primary failing, I believe, of the approval of this project.
Unless there's anything else, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
One more thing?
Yes, Ms. Donback?
I just wanted to welcome Natalie and thank you for your excellent supervision of the, of herding cats up on the dais.
Thank you. It was fun.
You get a lot more chance.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. We don't need a vote.
We do need a time.
What?
And time it for the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Okay.